All right. No, but I did take the, um, work of office. And Matty says, "Long as I take the work of office," I'm all set.
Okay, that's fine.
But thank you.
Because I was prepared to do it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Whatever.
So this is the joint meeting of the DPW Subcommittee and Town Council Tuesday night, tip 2022 at 6:00 PM in the Veterans Row Room. Agenda item number two, roll call, Councilor Steve.
Present.
Kevin Swayne.
Present.
Steve Lozo.
Steve Lozo is here.
Chairman Mark Caddius here. Consider an approved joint DPW Town Council meeting minutes of June 21st, 2022.
Motion.
Is that it?
I have two minor corrections. Um, I, item number nine should add, um, after where, where Matt mentioned that they didn't, um, that they, we didn't have anybody watching it, but he urged, um, citizens to report them to both DPW and National Grid.
All right, and you sent that to me?
I did.
All right, thank you.
Um, and for items number eighteen, seventeen, and eighteen, it reads, um, to Subcommittee, but it should be forward to full council.
Okay. Yeah, you're right. Yep, my mistake. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Alors in favor, has amended. Agenda item number four, Citizens Forum. Anybody have any food for the citizens? Okay. Agenda item number five, discuss extension of the contract for HVAC system and control maintenance for various town buildings with Reno HVAC for FY23, the third and final year of the contract in the amount of $28,973 in 18 cents.
Motion.
Entertain a motion. Matt?
So this is, uh, a renewal for the third and final year of the, um, 2021 HVAC contract. The police department had sent me, uh, an email last week or, or so, um, expressing that they didn't feel like they were getting, um, getting really anything out of the contracts, uh, since they have Rick Bevo there, uh, who, who previously or, or often does a lot of the preventative maintenance for them, changing up filters, et cetera. Um, I advise them that if they wanted to, uh, be on the row, that would eliminate them from the contract. So this, uh, amount reflects, uh, the price increase for the third year minus the, uh, police station subgroup or the police station group subtotal, uh, for a total of $28,973 in 18. On a side note, I expressed that we also have, um, serious problems with this contract. We had problems with this contract since the beginning. We had problems with, uh, MPC services before them, and we had problems with MPC services when I started under their first, uh, contract at the end, toward the end of their first contract. We don't have the expertise or manpower to administer this contract the way that it should be administered. And I think that the only way to get a real hold on this, um, whether we, whether we continue to contract this, these services out or not, um, I think the only way to get a hold on, on, on this contract and to track the work that, that's being done under it and to follow up on all the proposals that they're, uh, they're providing based on the service that they're doing and the things that they're seeing, um, and to make sure that those prices are reasonable and to go out for quotes on, on, uh, larger projects especially, but, uh, but even smaller projects so that we know we're getting good prices. I feel like the only way to do that is to have a facilities manager, and I think that's one of the biggest blind spots or, or, or needs in this town that is not fulfilled currently. Um, whether it ends up being a joint thing with the school, which has been discussed in the past but never went anywhere, um, I'd rather see it just on the, uh, the town side for now, uh, since there's a lot less coordination issues that would have to take place or that would have to be resolved. Um, we need a facilities manager who, who works under, they, they could work under the DPW at sort of a, the same level as our operations manager, dealing with the day-to-day stuff in the streets, parks, uh, cemetery, et cetera. And the facilities manager would deal with all the buildings that are HVAC, um, things like the town hall carpets, which have, uh, which, um, only seems to go anywhere when I, when I poke about it. Track of our building craftsmen, who could be utilized much better than he's, he currently is. He's spending too much time out collecting trash and doing whatever he's doing that's not building-related. Uh, we could use better oversight of him, frankly, because I think that he spends too long on some of the projects that he's working on. And that person, I think, would also, uh, oversee the building constituents as well. And I think that's a, that's more than anything, that's, uh, a new position that I would like to push for because I think it's a, I think it would make our, the maintenance of our buildings, uh, much, much more coordinated, uh, and just having that expertise there where we are really, I mean, I have a lot of construction, I have, I have experience in building construction. Um, I worked for a general contractor for a couple of years doing customizing project management. Quite have a good sense of building systems, but not the level that, uh, it really needed and not, and I can't devote the time to these, uh, to these items that, uh, that really, that they need. So, um, on a side note, I think we need a facilities manager, especially, um, in relation to things like HVAC. But in the meantime, uh, I think we need to renew this for a third and, uh, final year of this contract and determine how it will see next year as this, uh, contract comes to a close.
All right, thank you.
Questions discussed? Um, given what you just said, Matt, um, what do you see, when it comes specifically to this contract, what do you see the key issues being that Reno is either doing or not doing?
Uh, well.
Because it's, a lot of what you were just saying, quite frankly, would make me a little love to want to renew them if they're not doing what they're making do.
It's not necessarily that I am excited about renewing them. I'm not. I think it's the best of the worst, the terrible options that we have.
Great.
Not having this, not having them coming in and doing PM is a recipe for disaster. We're gonna have to, I mean, to, in order to even coordinate that, I would need to hire a facilities manager because I can't bring in the people, the expertise that's required, the people, the techs that are required and guide them to all of our different systems, which is what, uh, this contract does.
Right.
But just without adequate oversight. Uh, we need better oversight to make sure they're doing the PM that they're supposed to be doing. We need better follow-up to, on the quotes that they're providing us, um, to make sure that it's actually necessary work and that it's actually good prices or go out for prices from other contractors.
Right.
Um, and these are things we just don't have to do.
Okay.
So.
And then?
It's a, it's not a great. The contract's basically the same as when I started.
Right.
I don't know how, how good it is because I don't have the expertise to really say for sure that we're covering all the bases on PM and everything like that. There may be some improvements that somebody coming in could make, but, um, I think that right now is the best of our four options.
Okay, okay. And to follow that, follow that up, going through you to the manager. Um, do you, um, I'm assuming that you and Matt have talked about the ideas of facilities manager, and I know we've kind of talked about it a little bit at the council level, but not, probably not as much as it deserves. Um, any thoughts on, on that and, um, where potentially in the budget, if we were to pursue something like that, where would we come from?
Uh, we haven't had any in-depth conversation. We, Matt's only been in the interim position for a couple of weeks now. We've been needing to address other different things, as you know, a couple of emergencies, we've been needing, um, for, uh, some interviews, but it did come up and Matt did bring it up that he thought that it would be beneficial. And I did have the conversations with Dr. Gular. I'm not sure, you know, while they're in receivership, how well we'll get a partnership going with them. Not that they don't, that I don't think the Dr. Gular isn't open to it, it's just, I think the differences in his mission versus what we're trying to do, but, um, Matt has indicated already the same things that he had made this evening, uh, as to why it would be beneficial. I guess we would have to look at the budget to see where we can find money and resources for that type of position. I spent the last couple of days trying to figure out how we're gonna replace Mr. Palatier and coming down the fact that we may have to have two separate people because of open to the state building, uh, folks and some other inspectors and, et cetera, they have a very difficult time finding one person with both designations. So, you know, there may be a couple of positions we need, we're just gonna have to prioritize which one. So, you know, a roundabout way, yes, I agree, it might be best to have facilities manager to best, uh, utilize our personnel. Um, I have heard in DPW that, you know, we have people who, they're spread in.
Right.
We're using our carpenter for other things, um, and the oversight would be good. So we'll just have to look and see what we can figure out.
You all set, council? Kevin?
Through you to Matt. Matt, this $29,000 figure you have here, that does not include the police department?
Correct.
Do you know, does that include, as far as PM goes, does that include filters and belts and, or is that just actual labor?
Yes, it includes filters and belts, uh, fuel filters, uh, air filters, I believe we excluded, but they, but when they're doing PM, we, since we purchase them through the school department, we provide them to them and they install them so that our building craftsman isn't, uh, isn't duplicating their work.
So?
Uh, so I believe they're switched out quarterly. So twice, uh, two of the quarters, they're swapped out by the, uh, by the contractor, provided by us.
You're all set?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Counselor?
Um, Mr. Chairman, through you. I've got a little bit of history with the building of the school maintenance department. I was on school committee when we put the electrician in. We daily put the HVAC guy in, and it grew, and it was all based off of money that was spent by the school district. The electrician we were upwards, I forget what the number was, it was over like eighty, a hundred thousand dollars. It was, it was a large number, which really showed you could hire an electrician full-tail and would be cheaper to have a full-time electrician than summoning out the lower-shore electric at that time. Now, a lot of time has passed. I know I was member of the, of the belief that they should consolidate the school maintenance with DPW. It works, it, well, people are changing, but under Mike Como and the design, it worked out very well on school side. Uh, Hema Clark tried to start the same thing on town side, they hired Luke Fallon, he was a, a master builder's license and he would do framing and projects. And then it was supposed to go into more of a building, uh, maintenance, not so much the, the roads, but what ends up happening is, you know, I see Luke, you know, doing landscaping, doing whatever it takes. Um, I do support looking at it on town side separately and, uh, and, 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 because roads and, and, and buildings are two different things. And maintenance, this is the thing, maintenance, cutting lawns and sweeping streets and, and, and stuff like that is different than building manholes and paving streets. And then when you get into the building construction, it's a whole different league. I mean, Matt, not that, I, I don't think you could handle it, but time-wise, you're not gonna handle it. So for myself, I'm sitting here, this debate has went on for probably 15 years, maybe longer, because the town, school side did such a fabulous job on, like, the summer buildup, summertime. All the maintenance guys went into full tilt, you know, redoing painting, building, they were moving petitions, classrooms, and, I mean, it was, it was an amazing thing. Uh, Florence Chandler, town manager, very supportive, you know, threw over truck equipment, lawn cutters, so the DPW didn't have to do certain ballpox, you know, they were talking about a school, but they attached the field to the school. But that was a different era. Now we're into this new era where I think we really have to look at it because buildings are a lot more technical now than they've ever been. Um, when you look at an HVAC company, a contract, you're contracting it out, how many buildings? Do the math and at some point you're gonna think, I could actually, if the numbers, the story's always behind the numbers, why you do what you do. If the numbers show that you're spending more in a contract than you do as a person, you hire an HVAC person under this building maintenance person or whatever title you wanna give it.
Right.
So I think, moving forward, I think the town manager's on the right page, we're gonna have to prioritize, uh, you know, we just put four firefighters on, we just, I mean, we've been doing a lot of great things, but what really worries me is just the bulge on the financing, you can see where it goes. Again, we have a good finance director, good town manager, we can knock the tin on this one, because I think you can save yourself some money, um, by not contracting out some of the things that would have to be based off the numbers.
All right.
I have a question, um, and forgive my ignorance, but, um, didn't we have, a couple of years ago, we had like a high school, um, crew to do like landscaping and cutting grass and things like that? Because I don't know why we're paying so much money for our GPW people to be doing that.
Go ahead, Matt.
I don't know, I do know we occasionally have summer hires, uh, we do have one, we have one right now, um, who's a part-time non-union, but, um,
Yeah.
I'm not sure how many we've had in the past, I know we've had more than one before, but, uh, and whether they were high schoolers.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if they technically were, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, a lot of times, a lot of times if Luke's doing, uh, trash pickup for whatever reason, um, he's, he does have a temp hire or the little guy.
Yeah. Because I know Luke in particular is very knowledgeable. He's, he's very good at, at what he does. I can't see that, that he'd be, I don't know, dedicated to like doing landscaping and trash pickup.
I'm not sure why he's used so heavily on that front.
Yeah.
And I'd like to, um, I'd like to figure that out and see if there's ways to, see if there's, uh, carpentry projects and, and similar things that we're ignoring because he's out there doing trash.
Yeah.
I would like to, yeah, I'd like to look into that.
You all set? Okay, Jim? George?
When I was chairman of the recreation community, DPW had four college students they used to hire right after graduation, you know, it was either for eight or 12 weeks, whenever college started back, and most guys were, uh, you know, they worked in the recreation community as far as protecting fields and stuff, but they were, they did all the maintenance in the fields, trash pickup in the fields, lawn cutting, all that stuff, because that's a full-time job during the summer. So they were doing all of that and, uh, because the college kids, I mean, uh, high school kids can't, if I remember right, use motorized equipment. It was something with the insurance back in town.
That may be the case, yeah, especially if they're under.
Yeah, and they were, it was part-time and they paid a little bit more minimum wage back then, but they were college students.
All right. You're all set?
Okay. Yes.
Okay, if there's nothing else, all those in favor? Motion passes for a row. Agenda item number six, discuss bid results for road improvements 2022. Entertain a motion to recommend awarding of the contract for road improvements 22 to, to the low bidder, Pioppi Construction, in the amount of $951,499.50 for the base bid on.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Eric.
So we had two bidders on this project, Pioppi and Lynch, which is, numbers came in around five percent higher than Pioppi's. I split out, so going back to when I started this, uh, putting the bid, the bid documents together for this project, uh, unfortunately, this has been in the time when my third son was born and Heather left. So a lot of, I didn't get as much time to devote to this project as I would have liked to. At the last moment, I did, uh, revise the bid quantities to better match what, uh, what my vision for the roads was and to remove Moon and Coombe Street, which were, uh, simple milliner overlays to build on what National Grid, that, uh, where National Grid has done work, um, with the, uh, assumption that they would, uh, kick in similar to what they did on Main Street. They seem less, I spoke to, um, someone from National Grid recently, Pete Mizutti, and seemed less, uh, willing to work with us on that kind of a type of thing anyway. But anyway, I pulled those two out just in case, uh, no, because all prices were just escalating rapidly throughout the, this process. So I was concerned that the numbers would come in a bit higher than, um, than we had budgeted for, which ended up being pretty much exactly the case, uh, without alternate one. With alternate one, I believe a million dollars was, uh, approved for this, and then we also transferred a hundred thousand from snow and ice, uh, extra snow and ice money into this project. So I believe total we have 1.1 million dollars. Um, but we also have to pay for police details out of that and, uh, cover any, any cost increases, um, which I put in a, uh, an allowance for asphalt price escalation, which is a requirement of mass stop projects, and, uh, especially with prices the way they are is, would be a requirement basically for anyone to even bid on it. So, um, so in the end, Pioppi's bid without Moon and Coombe Street in a $951,499.50, which, uh, we can, uh, support with the budget that we have. I got a question through a counselor last week about why there was no stone or why there's no gravel on the project. My interpretation of that question is why aren't we kind of rebuilding Ellis Road with stone or with, with gravel, rather? And so the short answer to that question, why there's no stone on it is because there's no, uh, because that's not part of the design. Brentwood Drive, we removed, uh, quite a bit of, uh, excess reclaim material in order to meet the grades that we needed to hit and go look at that road and how it's held up for the past two years. I couldn't be happier without it holding up. So Ellis Road, maybe not equivalent to Brentwood, uh, there's some choke points, which, uh, one of them is, uh, is like a three-foot oak tree, uh, where the, where the Ellis Road goes down to about 13 feet. I do have provisions in there to remove that, and when we need to make up small amounts of gravel, uh, such as where we're pulling out a big stump and maybe, uh, increasing the width of the road a bit, I assume that we could use excess reclaim material. Though, the long answer to that question, well, this ended up being a bit long, but the longer answer to that question is also that I did, uh, I mean, this, I didn't have the time to devote to this project that I would have liked to, and I wanted to include a nominal amount of gravel so that we'd have a price for it and so that we could, uh, make up small amounts where necessary. But I think we can still do it with, uh, with reclaim, uh, excess reclaim material. With that said, I have concerns about Pioppi, um, and what happened on, uh, Page Hill Road with, uh, massive increase in, uh, in the scope of the project and the quantities and the cost of the project based on his, uh, continually calling Heather throughout the course of the weekend until he was invited to the project site on Monday. So I have plans to control this contract. I have plans to put together a very specific scope of work with quantities that I believe are going to be necessary for this project and handing it to him, and I will not support, uh, increases in those quantities. He'll have to come back to me and say, "No, I, I don't think that's enough of this quantity because of this." And, uh, we'll have to come to an arrangement as to, uh, the quantities that will be required. If he's willing to work with me, then we'll have a successful project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Steve?
I don't have any questions. I just wanna say, out of the two contractors, Lynch, who had, you, as we know, was a mess.
Yes.
Pioppi is a local guy. I've seen his work. He does great work. He's flawless in what he does, and he's very particular. Out of the two contractors, um, and he's a local one, I, I would support Pioppi because after seeing Lynch's Main Street mess, I couldn't support Lynch at all, so I'll, uh, go with Pioppi.
Kevin?
Through you to Matt. So if I'm reading this correct, that there's $951 we're approving for Pioppi, it's not to include doing Moon Street or Coombe Street?
Correct.
So what happens to those?
They, uh, don't get done at the moment. We can either, we can either plan to do them as part of this project if we find additional funding, or we can do them as a separate project independently, or we can ask National Grid to come in and do what they would on any other job, which is put in the, the eight-foot wide milliner overlay and leave it at that.
I say, uh, I say we, we start laying in on National Grid. We got, I mean, they're, they're beating our roads up bad, and we're suffering like years. I mean, it's great what's the street was done today, it's over a year and a half in the making, we suffer.
I read the street a complete mess and ignored it for two years.
That's gotta go, it's gotta go a little bit that way.
I mean, I, I just, I think we should start putting some heat on National Grid as far as following our open trench permit bylaws. If we're not gonna do Coombe Street and Moon Street, Moon Street's a year and a half in the making right now, and Coombe Street's probably pushing nine months, I'd say. And I think we should start pushing, especially now if we're not even gonna do either one of, touch one of those streets, I think we should hold National Grid gas liable now.
They, they would be liable for what they, for the permit requirements that we put on them, which was the eight-foot wide milliner overlay after a settlement period, uh, which I think wouldn't have any, any issue coming in doing that. If we wanna push on them for something that wasn't included in that, that specific street opening, we'll probably get pushed back, but.
League.
We should extend the street permits. Cool, obviously, we can't do that particular one, but, uh, for future reference, we should definitely take a look at the permits and expand them if at all possible, all the way.
You all set? Matt, did you wanna say something?
Um, well, to follow up on what he was saying, it's definitely, I think we need to follow up on the street permits and expand them for future, for future work to make sure they get more pavement done as much as we can. Um, the other thing I was gonna ask is, um, you mentioned setting in an escalator for asphalt costs and stuff. What was that escalator?
It's based on the liquid price of asphalt in any given month. So you, uh, you specify the month that, that the bidders are bidding on, so the, I'll include the latest, uh, liquid asphalt price. And then there's a formula based on the percent quantity, uh, percent of hot mix asphalt that is liquid asphalt to get the actual amount of liquid asphalt on the project, and then you multiply that by the difference in the liquid asphalt price from the bid time to the time that it's actually installed, and, uh, you end up with the escalator.
I was thinking in terms of like, are you just projecting a certain percentage increase?
I think I put basically what came out to essentially about $5 a ton, which I didn't wanna, I mean, I didn't wanna kill our budget just with, with an allowance for an escalator.
Absolutely.
But we could, well, if, if, if prices go up a lot.
You all set, council? Councilor Lozo?
Yeah. I will never question Jimmy Pioppi's quality of his work, but I do agree with you 100%. You need to corral him. He's, he's a, don't get me wrong, he's probably only gotta get out work, me, or pretty close to it. He's a workaholic, he does seven days a week, he's not normal when it comes to his time. I know the guy personally, but longer than 75 times. But I would rather see Jimmy call you and not me as a council, okay? So for me, my answer is always see Heather, see Matt, you know, whatever they say, we'll run back to you.
That's what it should be.
Put the hole, put the leash on the guy. But I mean, he does a lot of roads in Holland, Wales, out in that area. Does a bang-up job, and, uh, the homeowners that he works with, um, he's got a bigger success rate than, than an anti, I know he had a problem up on, on the Page Hill job, but, uh, going forward, I mean, we just started doing roads and we didn't have a good case, and I'm up with the first round. I think you can probably change a few things here and there, get a little more reins on it, and I think that we can make these positive turns on a lot of this road work where the citizens would look at it in a better way. But I think, I think you're headed in the right direction, I think you know.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna wait till you make the agenda item.
Okay. The only question I have, oh, go ahead, Mr. Tom.
I just wanted to add that, again, Matt and I discussed the bid results last week, and we discussed the concerns about the little bidder, and he laid out a plan, because I too have had conversations in my time here with Mr. Pioppi, and historic concerns have been shared to me, but Matt and I talked about he has a plan, and I supported his plan on how to make sure. But Matt and I talked about he has a plan and I spoke his plan on how to make sure to rein it in. So I am also in favor of him going forward. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I wanted to add was that I'm still waiting on that road list, all the other roads that we're working on this year. There will be some crack sealing, fog sealing, maybe not fog.
There was, there was some money left in the, in the pavement preservation contract. It's already been spent because that contract expired on, it might expire tomorrow.
Right. So now this is a new year.
Maybe it was last month. Anyway, they got the, they got, they went up to the crack seal, to the amount of crack seal that we could have ordered under the remaining amount of the contract. And that's been, so that contract's done at this point. So any further pavement preservation will have to be under a separate contract and with new funding.
Well, we have funding. We put snow and ice in there. We have some leftover on this one.
We have 150,000 after, with the million dollars that was appropriated and the 100,000 from snow and ice. And remember that we have to also cover police details under this one. So that leaves us, I'm not sure what I'd want to budget for police details, but leaves us with probably less than 100 grand for pavement preservation, which I don't think, unless we got a specific project that we want to go out for bid for, I don't think it's worth proceeding on this stuff.
No, I just was, I was under the understa, I thought I was under the understanding that we were going to be doing more crack sealing this year. I thought that's what the discussion was about.
I think so too, yes.
We did more crack sealing under the existing contract as much as we could further. But there was never, in the list of roads that we provided for this million dollars worth of funding, we had provided some, some roads such as North Woodstock Road for, for micro-surfacing. But in the end, these were the roads that were chosen.
Yep.
And they're, they're not reservation roads, but they're, they're paving.
Okay. All right, anything else? All those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number seven, discuss the amendment to the tie-in bond contract for sludge conveyance upgrades to provide additional construction phase services for a fee not to exceed 9,500 and be funded from account number 600440-583000-23583-FY23 tax support capital budget. Entertainer motion?
Motion.
Recommend.
All right, good.
Second.
There you go.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, so to start with, the way that tie-in bond and all the other consultants bid and quote projects like this is that they give you a lump sum for the design fee and then a time and materials not to exceed for the construction. Because this, because of lead time delays, we had more, more construction meetings than they anticipated. And there've been a few coordination issues that have popped up that the engineer had to deal with, which led to them going over budget to the tune of anticipated 95,000 dollars. This project is now wrapping up. The only thing that they, that the contractor has left to do is to do some paving outside where they removed a, the pit where the ex, where the outside conveyor came up out of the, out of the indoor pit. We, there was, the operator of the wastewater treatment plant brought to, brought to light some issues with ponding of the asphalt in that area, which wasn't identified previously. So we increased the scope of the, of the asphalt a bit. I'm going to be bringing you another change order for this, but it will actually be a negative, a negative dollar amount because we had some allowances and some other items that because of tie-ins could work on this project, we didn't end up needing to use. We had $25,000 in for temporary conveyors because we didn't know what the, how it was going to work with being able to maintain our deep sludge wastewater operations during this project. Sherbond, the contractor, has been excellent and tie-in bond with their coordination bringing this project in, under budget. And not, not early per the original schedule, but their extended schedule based on the lead times that they projected, we're going to finish before that. So, so yeah, I recommend approving this, oh, a change order for tie-ins contract to, for, for the extra work that they've done on this project.
All right, thank you. Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, this, this actually made me think of something sort of related. Would it be possible to get an overall chart of the various engineers, engineering firms and what, what they're costing us, what the timeframes are for the various projects that they're working on? Kind of across the board? Because I mean, we keep seeing the same names pop up over and over and over again for this project here and this project there. And they're tied in lines in multiple places and those kinds of things. It'd be, it'd be really helpful to be able to see it all in one place, who's doing what and where and what their, what their patterns are and how it's costing us.
Yeah, that's, then I got a, a list of our, our current engineer contracts.
Yeah, like DPW Sewer Water. I know the airport's got a couple. And various emergencies that have happened in the last couple of years and that kind of stuff.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Thanks.
The only question I have is if this was a change order that came in April 19th. And at the time, there was no, there was no change in the, in the cost. Correct. And this was, this was signed off by tie-in bond on April 19th. They had a change order and it's change order number one. Original contract price and contract price prior to the change order, there was no additional cost to, to the project. And at the time, tie-in bond signed up and is agreeing that it's a change order. But there was nothing in here saying that tie-in bond was going to increase their, their cost. And then I know that.
This is, are you looking at this right here or, or you're looking at?
The change order from May 19th.
Oh, yeah. At the time, they hadn't gone over their budget yet. I mean, there were, I'm sure that the, the prospect of extending the, the timeline by however many months obviously was on their radar at the time. But without any additional information, they didn't have enough of a guess as to how much extra time they'd spend on the project in order to propose, actually propose the amendment.
So the original change order was because the contractor was building the, it says the conveyor upgrades, contract extension due to manufacturer delays. So it's not the town's fault if the manufacturer was delaying. So shouldn't the money come from the contractors since they're the ones that delayed it? In fact, the document that we received at the time, they weren't answering any phone calls. So they demanded, they wanted to know what was going on. They didn't get anything back from them. What was going on?
Sherbond, I'm guessing that, that, I don't have what you're looking at, but I'm guessing that that is Sherbond's failure, or not Sherbond's failure, but the Sherbond's va, vendor's failure to respond to Sherbond, the contractor. Because Sherbond is nothing but responsive to us. Every time that we have, need anything from them, they're, they're on it right away.
Okay.
So hence, this is, the lead time delays on a screw conveyor are no more our fault than tie-ins fault than Sherbond's fault. It's just the way that it is right now.
It's the manufacturer's.
And our, our original timeline on this couldn't have reflected the, the, the lead times that we didn't, we didn't know which, which vendor would be chosen for the screw, screw conveyors. Obviously, there, that was consideration during that. But we can't dictate, we can't necessarily dictate what, what the period of construction is when we don't know lead times. And that's no more the contractor's fault than, than ours.
No, it's the manufacturer's fault according to the document that I have. Due to manufacturer delays. And then during the meeting, I, I got the minutes, Counselor Steves asked if the materials have now been shipped. And Heather confirmed they had. So this is back in April, so I don't know what the delay was. This was done back in April. I can't imagine it took, what, two or three months to get the conveyor?
I'm not sure when they actually took delivery of the conveyor, but they've been working on site diligently for, for months now. And the project has been a success as far as I'm concerned. We're coming in, like I said, under budget and ahead of our originally extended schedule.
All right. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? All those in favor? Opposed? Three to one, thank you. Agenda item number eight, discuss transfer of $31,842 from account number 610450-583000-91250. Capital, water capital reserve to account number 610450-583000-22580. Water system capital to cover the cost of two Hydratec invoices for emergency services related to the South Street water transmission main activation and the High Street water main break. Any excess funds will be available in system capital to cover any last-minute reimbursable expenses by the water department. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Go ahead, Matt.
So we have a couple of Hydratec invoices here that total a little less than $30,000. The first one is a little under 10 grand. It was for, while during the South Street transmission main activation, one of the valves, one of the cross-country valves between Denison Cross Road and South Street got broken closed. The DPW assisted them with digging it. And Hydratec came in once it was dug and pulled parts out, rebuilt them so that we can get that valve operating again. That was a little under 10 grand. And then they also assisted with the insertion of a live, a live insertion valve on the High Street main break so that we could staunch the flow of water into the basement of the resident there. And that came up to a little under 20 grand. And we got a emergency DCM waiver for the procurement requirements on that based on the fact that we couldn't find any other vendors. So I'm asking for a transfer of 31,842, which is a little more than that. But I believe preemptively, we've put in a purchase order under, under whitewater in case they have any last-minute expenses that can be covered with that money. So you'll remember this was, we were going to transfer this money out for purposes of land acquisition, but I pulled that back at the last second because I knew these, these invoices were coming and thought it was wiser to use our in-budget capital money to cover these than to transfer that out for some future purpose and then ask you guys for money from stabilization to cover these.
Right.
All right, thank you. Any questions? The only question I have is, don't we have insurance on something like this? I mean, this wasn't an emergency.
No. I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe.
Because I'm looking at the white one.
I don't think you can really cover, I think our, if we damage property, we can get that covered by insurance? I don't know about any main breaks and stuff. That's, I wouldn't think that, that's a, a cost that we can insure.
All right. I was looking at the insurance provided by whitewater in, in the case of emergencies. And they, they cover general liability, they cover.
I believe that's.
Professional liability, also cover, they have an umbrella liability to cover the town.
I believe that's if the accident is caused by whitewater. I don't think that can be used to cover our, our aging water infrastructure that, for instance, this pipe's 18, from 1880. I don't think we could afford the insurance to cover.
Generally, it'd be there in the next, you know, if you could go back into that and you'd be paying for it, but just, you know, the failure of the valve, I don't recall what we were in. This is like the fourth such valve that we've dealt with in emergency procurement that have been here. And I don't think we were able to get insurance on the others.
Okay. So what caused the valve to lock and close?
There was a small, a small piece within the, it's, I believe it's, so it's a, the valve is horizontal, a horizontal gate valve. And there's a gear that works on an angle. And some piece broke just so that the gears weren't touching. And that was, that was it. It was broken and it was closed and we couldn't get it open. So we had to dig it and Hydratec assisted with the rebuild of that mechanism.
150-year-old valve there, Pat?
For AC, for something in the 1800s?
That one isn't from 1880, but I'm not sure how old it is. I'm going to say 50 because that's when our AC mains under South Street were installed. It was in the 50s.
Anybody else? Have any? All those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number nine, discuss transfer of 1250 from account number 001499-524300-0425. So moved. R and M Building, grounds, not wrong. To account number 001499-524300-0499. R and M of Buildings and Grounds, DPW Operations. Cover up the three invoices from Reno, H-Park and work at the DPW. Entertain a.
So I get you.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Matt.
So this is a couple of problems at the DPW, the, the AC outside of operations. And we had a, we had an issue where one zone was blowing hot air and one was blowing cold, not zone, within the same zone, we had some registers that were coming up hot and some that were cold. There was an actuator that was bad that was keeping a valve open, which was heating air-conditioned air. So that was one of the problems that's fixed by these. And then there were also two other, two smaller bills that were related to the, the AC and the operations, which we have, which I covered the cost of that repair with a transfer last time I was here. And we have two other invoices that are, that are related to that. When they came and looked at it, I don't understand why there are two and I'm going to dig into more of that. I thought Phil had a verbal from them that they were going to withdraw one and now he's saying they can't. I haven't had a chance to reach out to them since I heard that. I want to have this money available in case we have to pay those bills. But I'm still going to follow up and try to get that one that I feel is extraneous and unnecessary. And they shouldn't have charged us for it. I'm still going to try to get rid of that, but this will at least cover the cost of those in the event that it's necessary.
All righty. Any questions? Coming.
Through you to Matt. Matt, we brought this up, this Reno repair stuff on AC and stuff on, I think I'm meeting on the 21st. You're looking for, I don't know, 12, 1300 dollars? 115985? Have we repaired and figured out what was wrong with that condenser? That been fixed yet?
Yeah, there wasn't a problem with the condenser. It was just a leak with the coolant.
And how much did we end up spending on that hole when it first got hit?
I believe that, well, besides these two, we have two bills here that are related to.
What my, what my point is, if I may, what I'm trying to get to is we spent a couple thousand dollars, I believe.
Yeah.
Quite a few thousand.
Yeah.
I want to say like 34 or 43 was the number?
Yeah.
For when that, when that condenser got hit or that unit got hit. And they repaired it then. And now all of a sudden, we're having problems with it and getting billed again. Is that how I'm reading how these bills are coming in?
No, that's backwards. These are bills related to the diagnosis of the problem there. These, these happened prior to the, the repairs. I think that they should be at least one of these because I just don't understand why, why they came back twice.
According to this, these are dated June of '22. June 9th of '22, June 15th of '22.
Yeah.
June 22nd of '22. Two of these bills are for the, the AC on the operations room that we, on the 21st of, of June, you were looking for an additional 1,200 plus, I believe I read we already paid late, 3, 4,000 dollars worth of stuff.
As far as I know, the transfer that I was requesting last time, I can't remember if the work happened right before I was requesting the transfer or right after. But these bills predate that earlier in June. Then it was repaired for, to the tune of, yeah, it was, I don't know, somewhere between.
We got a couple thousand dollars in. Into this.
I asked for, uh, I asked for a transfer, we had some money already there, so the transfer was less than the cost of the repair. But yeah, like I said, I don't...
And something to me, I, I just, I don't like how this is adding up. I mean, we got thousands of dollars into this and all of a sudden they're coming back with more invoices for something that was supposedly fixed previous, now we're having more, I don't know. It just doesn't, it doesn't seem right to me, honestly. I had a problem when you asked for that additional twelve hundred and I'm glad to hear that the compressor's fine, but I don't know, something's not adding up with all these numbers to me.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we got, we gotta have upwards of four thousand dollars into that unit right now.
Mm-hmm. Almost all of that was the, was the actual repair, which, uh, which, as far as I know, happened after these two items, which were related to the diagnosis of the problem.
Yes, no, so Kevin?
Not really. It still doesn't, I mean, these bills are dated after, they came in and did repairs after the initial work was done. So shouldn't this be covered in the first time they came to fix it? That's, that's where I'm getting confused at. Maybe it's just me?
No, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand the question. I'm trying to say, I believe that the work happened right around the time that I was requesting the transfer, which would be about around June twenty-first, late last month. These bills are early to mid-June. These were related to the diagnosis of that problem and the, and they're, they're, uh, they were related to us calling them because we didn't have, uh, AC in the...
Which I understand that, so my question would be, is that initial couple thousand dollars we spent when it got hit with a cloud? When was that work done?
I don't remember any work being done back when it was hit by the cloud. I, if, if it was, I was not involved. Uh, it wasn't, I don't have any knowledge of that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Uh, my only question is, what account is this coming from? Cause they both say the same thing, with different numbers.
Yeah, one's, uh, for Town Hall and it's being transferred from the Town Hall account to the, uh, DPW account. Building grounds and...
So, all right. The account that it's coming from, is this from last year in budget?
Correct, yeah, uh, FY twenty-two.
So I've never heard of that. I've never heard about transferring from twenty twenty-two to, or from previous fiscal year to a new fiscal year.
This is a transfer from FY twenty-two, repair and maintenance of buildings, grounds, Town Hall, to FY twenty-two, repair and maintenance of buildings and grounds, DPW operations. This is a transfer of FY twenty-two money to FY twenty-two for FY twenty-two expenses.
Okay. All right. Okey-dokey. So, yeah, I have the same concerns that you have.
It, something's not adding up, in my opinion.
I, I would just soon postpone it.
I, I'd like to make a motion, we postpone this until we heat up all the bills from Reno that refer to, when the initial call went in, when that unit got hit with the cloud, because I remember in our packet, I believe it was on the twenty-first, we spent over three thousand dollars for them to come in. And you were looking for an additional twelve hundred dollars and I questioned because they said they, they couldn't tell us if the compressor was functioning or not. And then all of a sudden, again, you know, you're asking for another, according to my numbers, I think it was, uh, eleven hundred dollars more. I mean, now you're talking...
Let me try to, uh, explain a little bit more. The one hundred and thirteen thirty and one ninety-four forty-five are related to the, uh, DPW operations AC. The seven hundred and sixty-seven ninety is related to the, where one area was, uh, heating and one area was cooling because of a bad actuator. Uh, that's time and materials for that, uh, for that issue. The one hundred and thirteen thirty, I was the one that, was the invoice that I was under the impression that they were rescinding. And I still am going to try to get them to rescind that. And the reason why I, from my limited knowledge, the reason why they couldn't, couldn't, uh, couldn't tell if the compressor was good was because there was nothing to compress. If there's no refrigerant, you don't have anything to compress, so you can't confirm the, uh, functioning of a compressor. Once they recharged it, the compressor was working fine. I think that was just to, uh, cover their bases because they weren't able to test it because it wasn't charged with refrigerant.
So do, do we know when they recharged that?
When they did the repair, which I believe was sometime around the twenty-first, when I was asking for that. I don't, unfortunately, I didn't prepare, uh, by, uh, bringing that invoice because that invoice has already been paid. Uh, the transfer was made for it and it's already been paid, so I didn't think it was, uh, gonna come off.
I make the motion, we postpone till we get these bills. The numbers still aren't adding up to me. I understand how you're saying, I understand where you're coming at and I know you weren't involved from the beginning and I'm not coming at you, but, I mean, you, we were asked on the twenty-first for, like I said, an additional twelve hundred dollars for repair on the twenty-first and, and one of these bills is actually, wasn't received in the Town Hall until the twenty-first, so it couldn't have been on the agenda item. And then one's day, it, the numbers just aren't adding up. And we're getting, we're dumping all this money into this unit, but the numbers don't add up. I mean, the, the initial thousands that we spent on it, plus we approved an additional eleven hundred dollars and change and, I mean, now they're asking for another three hundred and some odd dollars for that same unit outside the operations room. I understand the one for that seven hundred and seventy-six dollars was something different, but the thing that gets me is this unit outside the operations room, we just keep dumping money into it. And, and we're dumping thousands of dollars into it. I'd just like to see the full, every single invoice that goes to that with that compressor and that AC unit that got hit, cause, I mean, it just doesn't add up to me, in my opinion.
Okay, okay, there's a motion to postpone this discussion. George?
I don't know, maybe the town manager can answer that, but postponing it, you're going into the new fiscal year.
Right.
And you're not gonna have the F, FY twenty-two money available.
We are in the fiscal twenty-three year.
Right, but you're still allowed to use twenty-two money, I think, till the end of the month.
Uh, I believe it's the first two weeks.
Right, the first two weeks. And then once that passes, you can't, you don't have that available money. You have to, uh, bring it before council as a, a bill that wasn't paid under the FY twenty-two things.
Prior year bill.
Prior year bills. And then the other thing, I think it's simple, Matt's got three different jobs that he did over there. He fixed the compressor and had it recharged and, and fit, and researched. He had the actuator in the inside of the building done, and then one other thing.
Those are the three bills.
Right, so I mean, it's, it's not, it's not related to the same incident.
Two of them.
But it's related to different things. And I, I mean, I, I think it's understandable, it's just, you had diagnosis, you had to care. And, and then again, the biggest thing I think you have to think about is the money that you're not gonna spend on the twenty-two, you're gonna have to do it on the prior year next year. So it's a whole different process.
Okay, hold on, Kevin. So, we are in FY twenty-three. I don't know what rule you're talking about.
Under, under, under the spending of monies in Massachusetts, they end July, January thirtieth. But they allow it two weeks, two hours longer for outstanding bills to come in to be covered. So that counts from July first to the, I'm gonna use the fifteenth. So you're allowed to pay prior year bills in twenty-three with twenty-two monies under that two-week timeframe. Once you go past that two-week timeframe, you can't spend twenty-two money. So it's like encumbering the funds to pay your twenty-two year, you do that all the time at, at the end of the year. You, you, you take that money that you, you transfers with and all that in your encumbers to be able to cover those late invoices that come in after June for twenty-two year work.
So could you tell me what general law that is?
I can't tell you. It's standard practice, I think the majority...
Chapter forty-four, section fifty-sixty-four. I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah, fifty-six.
Okay.
According to Karen, the last, uh, day for transfers is next week's, uh, town council meeting. So if this doesn't get on there, then it'll have to be addressed, uh, I don't know, have to bring it to Karen to figure out how to address it.
I will draw my motion, but Matt, can you get us some paperwork as far as this whole AC unit goes?
I think these two small bills and then the one big one for actually fixing it are the only bills that we have. And I think it's reasonable that we call them in, uh, and they bill us for that work. I believe that's the one, well, I don't know.
I mean, if we owe them the money, we owe them the money, right?
Obviously, on the ninth, they came in and they didn't, uh, they had to come back on the fifteenth to diagnose it again. That's my, that's what I don't understand.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get.
They should be withdrawing one of these bills and I'm still going to work on that.
That's what I'm trying to get.
I just wanna have the money there just in case we have to pay this.
I will draw my motion.
And, uh, the money to pay for the ones that we actually do owe them for.
Counselor Lozoni?
You don't wanna treat it as a prior year bill. You're better off going in with a withdrawal motion and letting Matt get the data for you, but financially, keep this thing closed for system.
Right. Yeah. Motion withdrawn. Counselor Steve, do you have something on your computer that you're not...
I was referring to it, it's just, you meant, you asked which chapter is this, chapter forty-four, section sixty-four?
No, chapter forty-four, section fifty-six.
Fifty-six?
Talks about the fiscal year shall begin on July first and then with June, June thirtieth. And return shall be made to the director under this section. And then it just says, provided however that the treasurer shall, until July fifteenth, enter and books all items for the payment of bills incurred in salaries and wages earned during the previous fiscal year. So I believe that is the provision in the logic of two weeks.
Oh, that's, that's provisioned as two weeks. And the section he was referring to about unpaid prior year bills is, is the section sixty-four. We talked about, um, it requires four fifths, about four and a half tenths, but I don't know how it's done.
Bigger process than prior year bills.
Mr. Chairman, is it today? Withdraw the second?
I would draw, I would draw.
Yeah, withdraw the second also.
You gotta withdraw the second animal.
Yep. It's done, yeah.
Okay, I think that's, uh, we've talked about it. All those in favor? All right, thank you. Motion passes, four to zero. Uh, agenda item number ten, discussion status of the Main Street project repairs and traffic signal. I brought this forward because we did do a walkthrough and we haven't heard anything else about it. And also, I asked about the signals. I did get an email from the town manager about the signals, so I'll, I'll look at the town manager and address this.
And, and Matt can open it anytime, but, so Matt and I met that day with VHB, Greg Russell from VHB. And we've had subsequent meetings with him. He was in here most recent, the last week, talking about the tip. We asked Lynch to submit their offer of resolve this in, they gave us a verbal that day. We asked for an writing, we reviewed it, we came up with our counter, and VHB submitted to them about a week ago, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Uh, and we're waiting on their response. Um, we disagreed with what needed to be done based on what our discussion, I referred to Matt and, and the engineers. You know, we were looking for more, not patchwork, but an overall solution, except for, say, for have them come in the middle and overlay and do cleaning all of it, cleaning the drainage. And we're waiting for their response to that. Similarly, we met, um, with VHB who had done the traffic signals. Um, I had passed on the request to look at the pedestrian crosswalk at Elm and name, um, I believe VHB was gonna go back and look at it and maybe some of the timing, because some of that, yeah, some of it was automatic signal versus on-demand, I think, which made it, I'm probably a little bit mad. One of the things we asked is once they came up and reviewed that, if they would come in and give a presentation as to why they did what they did and, um, what improvements it's made. Because at the end of the day, um, VHB said that these improvements were improving the flow of traffic all up and down Main Street, that across, uh, sections of Control and Hamilton. And, um, they, I think there could be a manual override for the, um, crosswalk at Elm, which would give an extra second or two delay before the green light. That's what we're looking at doing to create a better safety situation.
Yeah, to, uh, to avoid conflicts between, uh, left turns, especially, and pedestrians. Uh, the, the best, um, starting point that we could come up with was giving pedestrians a couple extra, an extra second or two in order to get farther into the intersection before people, uh, before they get the green light and start turning. Uh, that'll get them farther into the intersection and make them more visible to the cars that are turning. Um, some other things that were explored in the traffic study were, um, adding back, um, the left green arrows. Uh, the anticipate, the expectation is that that would increase, uh, queues back on Main Street. At the worst times, it'll, it'll, uh, double it back to, um, Hamilton and Goddard. And similarly in the other direction, I assume. And there's concerns because there's, it would require swapping out the light, the head that we have for a five head. And basically, they, they're, the masks, the masts and mastarms that are out there were designed by somebody who, uh, a structural engineer who said, yes, they can support this much weight. And when VHB took this project over, they didn't have those calculations and they don't know what the, uh, what the footings look like or what the soils are like. So basically, the only thing that they could do was replace them with, uh, heads that are the same weight. So if we were to change out heads at this point, not only would we be responsible for the cost of that, but for any liability resulting from additional weight on these mastarms, uh, beyond what was there at the beginning of the project. Um, so that's another concern. And the other thing that was looked at was adding pedestrian exclusive phase. Um, and that's also expected to, um, decrease the level of service significantly as well. Um, so they are willing to come in and, uh, do a presentation to council, but we want to start by increasing the, uh, pedestrian lead time by a couple seconds to get them further in. And hopefully that'll, uh, reduce conflicts between left earners and, uh, and pedestrians.
All right.
All right.
Steve?
To you, Mr. Town Manager. Um, as you know, I walked it with you, Main Street. Um, when you're talking overlay, what are we talking, the whole road or certain parts of it? Cause we found spots on the hill.
Yes.
Uh, and then right at Central Street on the corner, it just puddles water there. And then down by the Credit Union now, is the asphalt coming up?
I didn't wanna get too deeply into it, but my recommendation is, it's gonna be slightly above, probably around Cumberland Farms, all the way down to about Everett Street, I think it's worth.
So that's what, uh, Lynch had proposed to just do the lanes, basically. And then I think eighteen inches beyond the, uh, their, their lane, kind of, to overlap. Basically, just, uh, from about Cumberland Farms to around, to around, or just beyond Everett Street. But just the side lanes.
The old Credit Union is peeling up also.
Yeah, so that was their, that was their proposal. Our, our, uh, response was basically, was pretty much curb to curb throughout the entire project area. Not including most of the side streets, but including Elm Street. And, uh, yeah, so that's basically where we, uh, where we responded. We'll see what they...
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
All right, go ahead, Gus.
I'm sorry, I was saying, as far as going side, other side streets, I remember we had looked at the issue of specifically at Goddard Street and the, and the mesh there isn't very good either, between the all pavement on Goddard and the stuff that they put in, so. No, it should be, it should be done, I think it should be done on all of the side streets too. Most of them aren't very good.
We can, uh, we'll review that and if it's something that we need to include in our, in, in the final, uh, in the final agreement, then we'll push it to include that.
When are we getting, when are we actually gonna see a final agreement?
Well, we, it took us, it, or it took VHB, um, about a month to respond on our behalf. So I can start pushing them in the next week or two, but, uh, I just wanted to give them some time to, uh, to come up with a response that, didn't wanna take a month to respond and then come back with them in a week with, why you haven't here started it yet. Uh, but yes, I, we should, uh, try to push along soon, because we wanna get them out there as soon as possible. Well, maybe it's good.
The thread or calling in the bond, is that something?
We, we have to, we have to come to an impasse with them before that's approached.
So in all probability, it won't, it, it's not looking good to get this repaired and fixed this year under better conditions than they had last fall?
Better be done this year.
It depends on their response. If they come back and say, okay, uh, then they could be out here next week, uh, repairing it, so. It, it could definitely happen this, uh, this, uh, season, but it depends on us and Lynch coming to a, uh, an agreement. And if we can't, then yeah, then we're at an impasse and we can explore the option of pulling the bond or going after the bond.
Is there enough in the bond to finish to, to actually repair the project?
Um, yeah, uh, the, I'm, I'm honestly not exactly sure what the, uh, performance bond requirements are there. I'd have to look into it.
Okay, I thought it was three, three million or three or four, something like that.
Uh, that would be, uh, that would probably be a hundred percent. So I'm, I'm honestly not sure. Uh, and I'm hoping that we don't even have to go there and that we come to an agreement with them.
All right, thank you. Uh, Kevin, your job, one last thing?
Two questions, as far as...
There are two questions as far as Main Street goes. As far as Lynch goes with this, obviously, there's going to be some sort of repavement being done. Are they going to repave that back to that number twelve stone that they originally used? Or are we going to a different stone or?
They're proposing, uh, and I believe we countered and, and said that was acceptable, but increased the amounts. They're, uh, proposing to mill out one and three quarters to two inches of the, um, the twelve and a half and to put back a nine and a half. So it'll look a little smoother, uh, which is one of the reasons why we don't want just the center lanes done, because we don't want the one versus the other. We may, in the end, uh, or we, we've discussed the option of, um, coming to a compromise where we leave out the parking areas, uh, between the bump outs, but, uh, but repave everything, um, between those. And we don't feel like the difference between the twelve and a half and the nine and a half would really be too visible or too much of a aesthetic problem.
But with that, that scenario option you gave me there, leaving the parking areas, does that include intersections as well?
Yes.
So my next thing, if I may, about eleven weeks ago, Heather asked Lynch to come in, and it's been asked three times. Once in a walkthrough, twice prior to that with Heather. And I asked again last week, Town Manager, you were in a meeting, you weren't here when it came up, about getting them to come in and fill all those potholes that are coming in. And we're going on eleven weeks now.
Okay.
In my opinion, I mean, in my opinion, that's unacceptable. I mean, we spent four point three million dollars on a project and, you know, three months later, it's lifting and, you know, here we are, we're asking four, five times to get some potholes done. I mean, in my opinion, that's kind of asinine, spending that kind of money. And now we're going to try to get them to grind and pave the whole project again? I think we're going to be in a battle trying to get that done, if we can't even get them to repair potholes.
I didn't, honestly didn't know about that request, so I can follow up with that.
For the request for?
Filling of potholes, specifically. I mean, I don't think they're at a point where there are any danger to vehicles at this point, so I, I wasn't pushing for it personally, but, uh, I was just going to let the, let the process happen with negotiations, but, uh, I'm happy to push on for that. No problem.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's a good discussion. Thank you very much. Uh, agenda item number eleven, discussion on the status of replacement of the town hall carpets. Town Manager? Where are we at with that?
I may have to let Matt defer to it, because Heather was looking, and I know one of the issues was the cost, and we may have to break out portions of it.
Yes.
That's the last I recall of the schedule.
Okay, um, I followed up with Phil today regarding this. He followed up with Central Floor Covering, who had visited the site, I don't know, it's probably a month ago at this point, and hadn't provided a quote yet. Uh, they finally got their quote over to us. Uh, Russo sometime, uh, Al, Al Russo Flooring had sometime, um, last, in April, they had broken down their quote, uh, between Town Manager's office, Town Clerk's office, hallway, back entrance. Uh, we have similar quote from Central Floor Covering, so, uh, after vetting their quote a little bit, as they didn't, uh, specify prevailing wage, but I believe that was reported of them, and they have, like, paying terms that the town can't accept. But, um, so we'll have to vet that quote for them, but I believe that, once we do that, we can proceed. Since we have, uh, quotes from both Al Russo Flooring and Central Floor Covering, each of the individual items is less than ten thousand. I think we can, uh, figure out a way to get most, all or most of this work done very soon.
Okay. I mean, they have been transferring a lot of money around to get other things done, so it seems to me we should be able to transfer some money to get the town hall carpets done. So, thank you for that update. Uh, I did ask about the status of the dog kennel. We have been receiving some emails on that. I'd just like to know, when is that going to be built?
We met about a week ago with McClure. They brought us the draft documents. They were supposed to finish them up so that we could include them to put them up to bid. Um, and I would have to check in with McClure and, um, the police chief, because he's been involved in it. Uh, I don't know if Matt, you had any comment, but that's really where we are. We've had a couple other emergencies come up in between there, and I haven't circled back to McClure, other than, we now do have a document package. It just has to be finalized and then we're ready to go out to bid.
It's been going on for over a year, I think.
Well, the, the primary issue there was McClure offered to do some work for us, I think, um, as, maybe, I, I don't quote me, but they, they were going to help us out and give us a favorable, uh, set of documents. That came through Ms. Blakely, who has known them, but then the problem was, once we got committed to them and they had them, it was taking a while for them to complete it, and then they needed their architect. There was always one other person in the mix that had to review the, before we got them.
Dog kennel?
No, it, it's very complex to build for a state bid. You have to have a set of drawings and doc, bid documents, and it's not a complex, you know, it's three inches thick, uh, but they have to have certain types of drawings and all sorts of other materials inside. It's not something that I'm familiar with. I usually do, uh, goods and services contracting, but I was told for this type of bid, you had to have specialized documents. McClure offered to help us out with that and, you know, had to be quite patient with that.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
It's not a dog kennel like it used to be, like a box with dogs. I saw the blue prints when they were put in. The re-bomb had on it, the cutouts, the pitches, the way it's built, the way it's constructed, you need engineering documents. So you need some stamp on that thing to say that, you know, this is what you need. It's a little more complicated than the old days. But I saw the prints, I don't think it belonged in the rectory, I thought it belonged down the suite, but it all paid the input. Uh, but I think the building itself was, uh, was, was quite a facility.
All right, just like to see it get going, going. I know this has had a long time. That and the carpets. Like to see something happen on that. Uh, agenda item number thirteen, discuss the sidewalks in front of the Wells Building on Marcy Street. And this was something that Kevin asked to break forward? Do you want to elaborate on that?
Matt, can you tell me what the status is as far as, I've been asking for months?
Sure. So, I called Chris Buckley at Keith Construction. They're the contractor that was building, uh, eighty, eighty Marcy Street. Um, he's off the project now, but he was reaching out to the current manager in order to get a response. And the sense that I got was that they were willing to repair the cracked panel, but they were reluctant to take responsibility for the, that twenty-two point six four square yards of damaged sidewalk that was listed under, uh, under Lynch's, uh, change order number eight. Unfortunately, I don't have any documentation supporting that, so it's hard for me to push back on that. And also, at the bid quantity, uh, the bid price of forty-two fifty, it's just under a thousand dollars. So I don't know how much, uh, how much we want to go down that rabbit hole.
So they're willing to take care of the Marcy Street sidewalks that are?
Uh, the, on the Main Street side. Uh, the chalk.
I'm talking to Marcy Street side as well. There's, they replaced some panels, but they broke almost every single panel there during that project. I mean, the amount of heavy equipment they had on that.
I'll finish.
The amount of heavy equipment they had on that sidewalk during that project. Even after they paved Main Street, they broke panels. And I believe the town has pictures of them on that new sidewalk on Main Street, but they also had all that heavy equipment on the Marcy Street side. And if you look at those panels that are broke also, where they put the new service line into that building, the way they put that granite curbing back in, I, I'm baffled. It's got to drop at least four inches, and I'm not exaggerating. And it just happens to be right where the new pavement is.
Yeah, I did see that, uh, that curb. I wasn't sure if that was a.
That's where the main.
If that was, um, if the curb was like that, and I, I was under the impression that Lynch had replaced that panel.
That was from, that was from the contractor.
Basically, his position on those, uh, was that he already replaced the ones that encraft, and any, uh, any further work along Marcy Street would have to go through the owner of, uh, eighty, uh, of eighty Marcy, because it's outside of his scope. And not being our contractor, and, uh, I don't know where, if they have a building permit that could be held up for that purpose, uh, without a building inspector, I'm not even sure that they would have an answer for me on that. But, uh, we don't really, we don't have any pull with, uh, with this contractor.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else? If not, agenda item number fourteen, discuss the trench work by National Grid throughout the town. So another one that Kevin asked.
So Matt, this will go back to what you just stated about going after them. When we had our last meeting where the former DPW director was here, she said we had, it would be best if we brought it up to you or whoever's going to be the new DPW director. A lot of things with National Grid gas going on in this town, a lot. And there's a lot that has been done in the past that I feel we as a town have been very lax on. It was great seeing Worcester Street finally done after over a year and a half. I'm hoping they do the rest of the laterals that go down Worcester Street going out of town. But I, I believe they were on Sale Street today, the gas company, ripping up Sale Street. I believe they have all of, the majority of South Street to West Street already mocked or ripped up. So two things is, is there a way, and I know it's infrastructure, but is there a way we can stop National Grid from ripping up our roads until they fix all the roads that they have open now? And is there a way we can enforce our open trench permit regulations that we have? Because they're not living up to them.
So, uh, I could deny them a permit. I'm not sure what the, what the, um, result of that would be. I'm not sure if that's, if they would take legal action, because they're legally required to do a certain amount of main replacement. So I'm, I'm really not sure what that, what the ultimate, uh, um, effect of that would be. I think the, can we hold them to our, our standards? For the most part, yes. Uh, as I had mentioned, there's, we have requirements on our materials to use low film. They claim that it's incompatible with their pipe by specification and that they can't use it. Um, I think that leads to some poorer compaction and settling, uh, problems with their trenches. So, can we, can we address that? Yes. Um, once we have somebody, uh, working in the engineering assistant position, we should be able to keep better track of that. Ultimately, ultimately, the solution is, uh, multi-pronged. It's having somebody out there looking at them and updating our, uh, our street opening restrictions to better handle, uh, to better accommodate these big projects and get what we think is deserved, um, of, of those contractors.
Okay, if I may. Matt, through you, is, how can we go about, and how do we do it as far as, every time you got to do something, you got to pull a permit, and you got to pay a fee for the permit and all that. You open a road, you got to pull a permit. And as far as open trench permits go in this town, we do have regulations. Hammer Clock did them twenty years ago. Is there a way that we can now start either charging for the permit and starting to assess fines to this? Because, I, I, it doesn't take a rock and sack, just, our roads are horrible.
You have a three-year bond, Kevin, too.
No, but.
Let him finish.
But it's not being enforced. We got to start doing something. I mean, a, a lot of it, in my opinion, has to do, we as a town have been very, very lax as far as enforcing it. But we got to, can we, like, maybe update it? Can we, you know, figure out fees and fines? Who does it? How do we go about doing it? And I think something needs to be done as, as far as this goes. And it's not, I don't want to hammer National Grid gas, but they're ninety-five percent of our problem. I mean, as a general contractor, Sky opens up roads and everything, we got to do what it says and, and, you know, come back and seam seal our seams. It's not happening. Some of these trenches, I mean, a final trench, according to how I read it, is supposed to be a minimum of three feet wide, and, I mean, they're coming back, they're only twelve inches wide. Is it something we can, like, not just look into, but let's do something about it?
Yeah, definitely.
All right, hold on. Go ahead.
So, uh, back in March and April, I started the process of updating our standard specifications. With the intent of, once I was done doing the first draft of the, of the, uh, standard details, I would go back to the street opening permits, make them match, and, uh, start incorporating, um, solutions to problems such as the National Grid problem. Exploring the possibility of, of charging for our permits, or charging for a drain layers license, or changing the way we bond them, or, uh, any, any other, uh, ideas that people may have. If you want to take a look, um, these are the standard details that I started drawing. You can compare them to the, uh, the standard details that were done probably back in the eighties or maybe nineties. We didn't have any of the, uh, CAD files, so I basically started them all from scratch. Unfortunately, um, I stopped in April after Heather.
I'm glad somebody's doing something about it. I've been asking for over a year, since I've been on here, a year now.
And it's, this, this stuff's been on my radar for, since I started here. I mean, the, the details were kind of in shambles. There's a lot of, uh, problems with our street, our restrictions on street openings.
George?
I think Heather said there was over two hundred permits opened since two thousand nineteen, and that number were inspected. And, and the, the, the current response was, just not enough time. Wasn't sure on the amount of what wasn't inspected, so it was safe to say they weren't inspected. When, when National Grid, I, I asked Heather a question once and I said, is National Grid aware of the dissatisfaction of the town? And did somebody call National Grid? And the answer was, no. Nobody called to say they were dissatisfied with Newcom. She said that we can't, the town can't dictate who National Grid uses, but my understanding is, is that you go to National Grid and say, you're very, they're very unhappy with who you have working here, and you either put them in line or you replace them. And National Grid is pretty receptive to that, because they don't want to have this, this comfort within the communities that they work. Now, the other thing is, like, you take Everett Street. Uh, she mentioned that they were going to give forty-five thousand dollars towards paving of Everett Street. And my concerns was where they came up with that forty-five thousand dollars for pavement, because Everett Street is a full street that they dug up. And I believe, she said they were going to do, at a minimum, almost thirty inches they were hoping for. But if you read the bylaw, I believe it's like an eight-foot thing or, or, I forget the numbers. But I also question the laterals, because the laterals that they've been doing in our bylaw says every fifty feet, if it's a lateral within that fifty feet, it's a full paved project. And I said to her about Everett Street, and she said, well, I don't, I don't know if they're going to do, if they'd be willing to do that, but our bylaw says that it should be. And if half the street is within the fifty feet, I mean, they, they should, if you go down, that's just one street alone. But again, if you look at some of the pavings that they have done, uh, they're not, they're only what they cut. I believe in our bylaw, there's supposed to be saw cut when they do those, or straight edge cut. And same thing where they break off a chunk, and it's supposed to square that off too. That isn't done. And, and anything that Newcom has done is very, very rare. If you go on the High Street, I mean, I'm sorry, like Litchfield Ave area, they did, I guess the gas lines up over there. They did a nice job paving. They did half the street or they did the whole street, and it's nice. They did everything that was supposed to. I don't know who did their paving up there. But, but where everything is done, whether it's only a twelve-inch cut or something like that, that's where everything is filling.
So yeah, a few things there. The forty-five thousand dollars was my estimate, um, and that's based on, for instance, on Main Street, we had, once we bid the project out, we had bid prices on milling, pavement, tack coat, uh, hot joint. uh, hot joint, uh, joint sealing, stuff like that, those that would be required for a eight-foot wide mill and overlay. And we applied those, uh, based on the, the length of the trench, and, and any laterals, and came up with the, uh, amount that they kicked in, somewhere around, uh, under eight thousand, I think, on Main Street. Um, so that's where that number came from, that was an estimate, we don't have bid quantities, or didn't have them at the time, so we didn't have an exact amount that we would charge National Grid. Since then, I've talked to Pete Nazzoudi at National Grid, and they don't really seem to wanna go in that direction. They have some other options for us, but honestly, I'm not sure that any of them are, are anything that we want to. For instance, they would come in and, uh, have their contractor mill the entire road on, say, Moon or Coombe Street, and then we would, uh, come and pave. I haven't run the numbers yet to compare what the, he said that it would be a comparable cost. I haven't run the numbers to verify that. Um, but yeah, I think they should be coming back and cutting back their trench, because, um, so the eight-foot wide mill and overlay is a, is a, is a, uh, restriction just on that, their permits. Otherwise, the requirement would be come and overcut, uh, fill in as required, and repave. In order to get more mileage out of the contracts, we've, uh, allowed them to do a mill and overlay, but I think, uh, for instance, the problems that we're having on High Street are related to them, uh, digging out these, uh, one-foot eighteen-inch trenches. The sides gaping in, they fill them in, and there's voids there, and then they never come back and re-cut them. They never fill, uh, fill in those voids. They mill and overlay, and then you end up with little sinkholes along the edge of their, uh, their trenches. So, I don't think, I think there's a problem with the process of, of them digging these narrow trenches, not, not cutting them back, and then coming back and milling and overlay. Uh, so I agree that, I agree there, that we have
And then, for example, she was like, we talked about Everett Street, she was gonna use the money to repave the whole street, but she couldn't come to an answer when that would be done. And knowing the prices of forty-five thousand dollars, what it, she said, she couldn't say, it could be a year, it could be five years. It's not fair to the neighborhood to leave the road in that type of disrepair for any length of time. We are ninety days, say.
We can always, uh, go back and get them to, uh, fill in when there's, when the, their trenches are really bad, they're required to come back and fix them ahead of their, their permanent fix, whatever that permanent fix may be. Um, and they're pretty responsive to that. They've been out to Everett once or twice already, it's still a mess, I understand. The reason she couldn't tell you when was, we had put it on our road list this year, but really, we feel that, that we need a settlement period out there, uh, ahead of anything that we do. And whatever we require National Grid to do, or whether they kick in, or however it's dealt with, it needs more of a settlement period to, to allow some, uh, problems to surface.
Even watching them trench that, I, I mean, a sidewalk engineer, that's where I am, but they just took some of the backfill and just filled what they dug out, and, and just, and I, I, the little bit that I know of working in the construction field is that, is a process to go underneath those pipes and on top of those pipes, and then you're able to use the backfill if it's not bony and loaded with rocks and those kind of things. You know, I, I just, you know, and, and it's just like a compassion test. I, I believe the permit requires a, uh, I don't know if they call it, but they stick a probe down in it, and know if it's been compacted, and you gotta go so many feet, you just don't do one spot for the whole trench. And, you know, those reports are given to the town.
So, I don't know, I wanna go
I saw, I saw some quick, I see where you're coming from with the old, with the old link. We do have, and when you go to the town, uh, to DPW, they'll give you a spec that they want you to do this type of, so you do have to cut back, like, this much over the trench. You do have to compact it, and some of the times they don't compact it, and the flammable fill he's talking about, Boston gas, I mean, the gas don't like that. If you could put the flammable fill, that's even a better thing to do, but some of the, their type, and the flammable fill, they don't wanna allow that. So, yeah, it, the, the town has a spec, and if you read the specs and do it like what the town wants, it'd be a perfect trench, but they don't do it. And the guy that you want to hire to oversee this stuff is needed, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Alright, then I'll go to Corey next.
So just proof of thought, being a superintendent for a subcontractor for National Grid, for EverSource, just, just proof of thought. Um, every town that we've ever worked in, the requirement was any small trench, any trench, doesn't matter if it was one foot, two foot, eighteen inch, didn't matter, any kind of undermine within that trench needed to be cut back. Um, whether it was six inches or one foot. Uh, if a rock fell off the side of it, that area needed to be cut back, and then compact and paved. The requirement for any kind of waviness was a no-go, it all needed to be square-cut edged. Uh, include, like, alligator roads, you had to do the best you could with what we call alligator roads, just cracks everywhere. Whether you had a thousand-foot trench or a five-by-five bellhole, it needed to be square-cut before anything was done. Compaction testing, so they do the, the, um, you'll have a company come out and actually do compaction testing for the subcontractor, or for the gas company, depending on how the contract was, gas company may pay for it, contractor may have to pay for it. Or they run a dynamic cone petrometer, which is basically a, a hand tool that every crew should have in their truck. Um, depending on the type of material that you're actually doing the compaction test on, sand has its own requirement, gravel has its own requirement. It's actually a slide hammer, basically, with a different tip for material. So many slides would set that piece into the ground, and tell you whether you have proper compaction. It is okay to use excavated material, depending on what it is. Some gas companies were okay with twelve-inch minus over the pipe, uh, over the sand of the pipe. You have the sand bed, and you have to sand over your pipe with whatever their required minimums are. And then some, some who did okay twelve-inch minus, uh, up to gravel level. And the gravel level usually was a nine-inch minimum from, from base. So if they're not doing the cutbacks, if they're not doing the proper compaction testing, and if they're not doing, um, the proper compaction, and then the proper compaction testing, then you're gonna have problems. Uh, we were required to twenty-five feet with a BCP dynamic cone petrometer. Uh, if we didn't actually have to order somebody to come in and do, um, compaction testing and receive a ninety-five percent or greater in that hole, so, you know, if that's not being done, you're gonna have problems at the end of the day. And I have been called personally back to, uh, Southern Connecticut to fix anything, one of the, a couple of the companies that, uh, excuse me, a couple of towns that we used to work for, any trench excavation, bellhole, didn't matter, if we did work there, if anything dropped more than two inches, they would call us back. So that means gas company got a phone call, gas company called my company, my company called the foreman that did the job, the superintendent that was in charge of the job, and we had to go and actually fix whatever it was that was over two inches. And I'd gone back for an inch and a half, was the minimum, uh, doing my measurements. I'd actually gone back for an inch and a half. It was a small, small trench, but it was an inch and a half that I had to call my crew from Massachusetts to Connecticut to fix. And I can't tell you how many times my company has had crews removed from areas due to performance issues. They may not remove Newco, but they could remove the crew and swap them out, but that's based on a complaint from the town to the gas company in regards to what's going on.
So basically, the problem is, we don't have oversight.
Correct, exactly.
Thank you.
May I also say, uh, 'cause I, I forgot to mention in response to your comments, that, uh, National Grid does not have a drain layers license with the town.
Really?
I've, I've pushed that since I started here. I don't, didn't understand why they, why they
Wow.
don't have a drain layers license. Not only do they not, but whatever contractors they bring to site are not required to have a drain layers license.
Wow.
According to, uh, previous interpretation of our rules, or So we don't have bond from National Grid, we just have their
Wow.
their assurance that they'll come back and, and fix their trenches.
So there's no bonds on National Grid's way?
Nope.
Which explains why they're doing this to us.
A perfect example is Dresser Street in front of the school, in the, the field. That, they, they put a gas line, they paved the road, and go look at the road, would they have that trench that big? Because Caven and Brandon paved, what, two years old?
I do notice that
Twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, maybe.
High Street, well, we just paved it last year, and they're already marking it up to start doing trench work on it.
That's why I agree with his position.
Yeah, I believe that they should. On High Street, those problems started, uh, appearing while we were in the process of doing the, doing our last year's paving, which was, uh, it was an experiment, and it had some success, but, um, but I'll, I'll never approach it again to. It was another way to deal with National Grid's, uh, trenches slash, uh, permanent trench repairs. They did an eight-foot wide mill and overlay, and then we milled and overlaid the remainder of the road. Wasn't a great, uh, success, I don't think, so I don't wanna, uh, approach that problem that way again. But anyway, at the same time that we were paving, uh, paving the other half of the road, we were getting, uh, settlement and sinkholes along their trenches.
This council subcommittee was under the impression, I believe, that National Grid or Newco had performance bonds, or their trench bonds
Sure, yeah.
on their products. They were led to believe it, uh, even myself as a resident, we were led to believe that there was a three-year, uh, bond on trenches that National Grid did, or Newco did.
That's the case for every other drain layer in town. Uh, National Grid is the only company that we issue permits to without a drain layers license.
Alright, I'm gonna go to Corey next.
Glenn, could that be, does the employees, the gas company and some contractors are actually required to maintain what they call re-qualifications to actually install gas, which does include trenching, digging around gas, laying all the specifics down, compaction, so on and so forth?
Possibly, but I don't think there was ever that much thought put into it. I, I, my understanding is that sometime before I, I started working here in twenty sixteen, there was, National Grid did have a bond, a permit bond, and did apply for a drain layers license each year. I don't know why that fell off, uh, or under what circumstances or conditions.
Oh, Qs are usually separate, they're managed by, they're federal.
Yep.
So I carry Energy World Net, which is specifically for EverSource, and National Gas Association, which owns National Grid.
And honestly, I don't think the, them not having a seventy-five-hundred-dollar bond that's good for three years is really that big of a deal, because they are going to need to continue to operate in town. They need to stay in our good graces. So I don't think that having that bond would really, uh, be that much of, more of an incentive for them to come back and fix our, our stuff.
Just call them, they can fix them.
Yeah, but it is a question as to why they're being treated differently than other, uh, than other contractors and other drain layers.
Alright, thank you. It's a good discussion, I think we're gonna wrap this up. Unless anybody else has anything other than what you've already said, I'm gonna wrap this up tonight. Nothing else, nothing new? Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. All those in favor? So, meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.